June 18th, 2024, meeting of the collective school district board of directors is called to order. Mr. Smith, would you mind being using the mic?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Director Apple?
Here.
Director Luke?
Here.
Director Honchar?
Here.
Director Simsek?
Here.
Director Poshkar?
Here.
Director O'Brien?
Here.
Director Vuglianna?
Here.
Director Zalewski?
She's not able to be here tonight?
Director Schreiber.
Here. So we have a portion of our meeting at the very beginning where we invite the public to ask any questions about agenda items. And we do have one person that has requested to speak. The topic that you have a question about, there will be some presentations tonight that may answer your question. So if I can beg your forgiveness, could we let them?
Of course.
That'd be wonderful. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public questions for agenda items tonight? If not, at the end we have an open forum where you can ask any kind of questions. Moving on, we have minutes from previous meetings we'd like to approve. Can I have a motion to approve the two leading minute items in our Section 2 agenda?
Go with the second.
Thank you. Move the second and I'll maybe gently amend it. It's apparently three items, so it's one, two, and three. So I'll confirm it for the ability on three. Thank you very much. All those, first, any questions or comments? If not, we'll vote all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I report that we had an executive section participating where we discuss safety matters and informational matters. I now turn to Dr. Schreiber for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Director Schreiber. We have two administrative reports. We have one from Mr. Bealby in regard to our upcoming 2024-2025 budget. And we also have Mr. Raisikot here to give us the food service. He drew the shortest straw, and so he will go first. So I believe we have your presentation. Rachel, we have a way to go there.
Yeah, we can actually see it from our side. All right. Good evening. Happy to be here to give an update on the food service department. We are gonna go through, talk about our staffing, our growth, some community engagement, and some key topics and next steps for next year. So the first slide here just talks about our people. So we have currently open positions. We have six open positions at the high school, one at Crafton and one at Carnegie. We did have one new hire in the last six months. It was our driver, who's doing a phenomenal job. We are working with HR to try to put together like a two-day open interview event. So when you tell us about that soon. As far as training is concerned, this year we spent a lot of time on safety training, did weekly safety topics, preventing cross-contamination, life-cut prevention, different safety things at all the buildings. I also do weekly safety walks through all the buildings in the food service department as well. We also are looking to schedule another Serve Safe class this summer. We had two people attend last year, and we're trying to get some more of our staff certified as well. Little recognition, May 3rd was National School Lunch Year Day. So we took that day to celebrate our incredible staff at all of the different buildings. We got them a located lunch and cake. And had some special Lunch Year t-shirts made for them. As you can see, here's some pictures from that. This is our staff. We have some students that made banners and thank you cards and things like that. It was a nice day to, you know, give them some thanks and show them some of our appreciation.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
The staffing that you talked about, the shortages.
Yes.
Is that something that is similar to other districts in the area that every district is seeing shortages? Or is that unique to us?
I think everybody's facing kind of a similar challenge. But it has been, I mean, it's been tough since I've been here to get these positions filled.
What does that mean from a day-to-day perspective like you said? You said six shortages at this building. How does?
So there's multiple different serving lines. We have to limit the amount of lines that we can have open. It limits the different menus that we can do and those types of things. The more people and hands we have up here, the more options we can provide to students, the better the quality. You know, the more things that we can do. So that's really the biggest thing.
Last quick question. The lack of staff, do you think it's primarily driven by money where the positions aren't paying enough? Or they're just people aren't aware that the positions are open?
I don't, you know, I think it's a combination of it's tough to fill these because they're four-hour positions. So it's really difficult to find somebody that is just looking for, you know, a four-hour-a-day position. And that's really the struggle that I've seen at, you know, all the schools that I've been at because there aren't very many full-time food service positions in the school. So you're looking for a specific group of people and it's tough.
We're also at record low unemployment numbers in Alameda County. So there are fewer people who are working multiple part-time jobs at once. And so we're not competing on job quality. We're not going to be able to find people.
Good to know. One quick idea that we can explore in the future is if we have other needs in other parts of the district, could we fashion a four-hour role in some section and a four-hour role in food servicing combined into one? So somebody gets a full eight-hour day and benefits and whatever else, full employment, but we're also satisfying part of our need here and part of our need somewhere else. So just a thought for future exploitation. Sorry, there are plenty.
Are these positions, Aramark positions though?
No, they're all, yeah, they're all different. Moving on here. All right, so just a quick look at growth. This is year over year, so this is last 22-23 school year versus this school year. If you look at breakfast, we did approximately $13,000 more breakfast this year compared to last year. And our participation rate grew from 40% to 47%. And we did that, we actually had three less service days this year too. So we did that growth and we actually did it in less amount of time. Same thing with lunch, 5% increase in participation and we added 8,500 meals to that. The big thing, big takeaway is we were able to increase by 25,000 meals in the district this year. And we, with the labor shortage, I mean, the staff did a great job feeding more students, getting more students engaged. And that's really what we're trying to do, so. Onto the next slide here. Community engagement, just some things we've been able to do. I worked with the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, so I wanted to give them a shout out. They, we partnered with them during the school breakfast week and they donated some prizes and some gift cards and things like that that we were able to give away at the schools. Still been partnering and working with the Free Store. Aramark has provided over about 2,500 half-cans of milk. So every Friday for their backpack program, Aramark has been, you know, stepped up and purchased that for that. We're also continuing to partner with Jack Bisteck and St. John's Church this year. We're providing the lunches for them that they're handing out at Carnegie and Crafton, which have been going very well. It's been busy. We've been adding additional meals every day, so there's a lot of kids going to that. And we also work with the 412 Food Rescue this year, just for any perishable food items that, you know, at the end of the school year, you have some things that are left. So we work with them to make sure that that went to people in need, so. Next up, this is a slide of just some of the special event caterings. We did the senior dinner again this year. I worked with the group of seniors and they decided they wanted a pasta bar and a salad bar and desserts. So we did that for them. You know, we're looking to continue the growth in the catering as well next year. It's, we're able to provide restaurant-quality food for the district. And all the proceeds from that go to the food service program. So it helps grow the program as well. Student engagement, at the end of the year, we were able to put out, let's call it our student viewpoint survey. So I will be, will be compiling the data from that. This was just at the junior, senior high school level. So we'll compile that data and then in the fall, when I come back, I'll have all that and let you guys know the results of that survey. Also wanted to give a thank you to Ms. Jackson and the WCHS student news team. I worked with them a lot this year to promote different marketing promotions and things like that for National School Breakfast Week or if we were doing something different in the cafeteria. And we had a lot of support from them, so. All right. Key topics. Excuse me, and next steps. When I was here in December, we'd spoken about that we applied for a grant for a food service equipment grant. And I'm happy to say that we were one of 31 schools in Pennsylvania that were awarded the food service equipment grant. So it's worth about $42,000. We're going to use that money to purchase a new combi oven. So it's a state-of-the-art oven that we can program our menu into. So it's push-button, it'll be more consistent. It does steam, convection, or a combination, so, you know, the quality of the food will be better. And I'm really excited because it opens up a whole different playbook of things that we're able to do. So hopefully we get that done and it should be installed this summer and ready for next school year. I mentioned National School Breakfast Week. We put an emphasis on that this year. It was the first week of March up here at the high school. We introduced a new smoothie menu, so we were doing different samples of smoothies every day. We did some different giveaways, prizes, like I said, the Starbucks gift cards. At the elementary school, we had different, the theme was Surf Stop, so we had different themed giveaways every morning that the students participated. And we saw an increase that week, I mean, 10% participation, so it was nice for the program. We continued with our monthly limited-time offerings. Some of the things we offer in Spicy Chicken, Mole Talk, it was Thai Chicken Noodle Bowl, and a fire-roasted jalapeno cheddar burger. Oh, the other thing, so this was a big thing when I first started, the deli line. Everybody wanted the deli line. And we just don't, we didn't have the hands to open it. It takes a lot of people to do it. So what we did was we, three days a week, we offered the deli bar on our main line. And so we were doing made-to-order sandwiches. And then we also had like a different grilled panini special that pays. Well, also they could come up and get a panini or a made-to-order sandwich. And the students really liked that. So we started that in February and we're hoping moving forward to be able to continue that next year. Next year's menu plans, we are looking at a couple of different new lines. If we can get hired and staffed up some new concepts, a test kitchen concept that will be a five-week menu cycle. And, you know, for one week, it'll be like a made-to-order mac and cheese bar. And then it'll be an Asian noodle bar, just different things every week for the kids to look forward to and get them to try some different things. At the elementary level, we're going to add an extra hot entree every day. So right now we do one hot entree, one cold entree. Then we have like peanut butter and jelly and a cheese sandwich that the kids love for some reason down there. So this, we're gonna add an additional hot entree down there as well. So it'll give us an opportunity to try with the main entree some different items, like different, you know, General Tso's chicken or something like that. But the second option will be something that they're familiar with, a hamburger or, you know, that kind of thing. So there'll always be something hot that, you know, kids can relate to. And then finally, we're looking at revamping and having some new concepts for the cafeterias at all locations. This is for the elementary school, Cold Calf. It's just very vibrant, colorful, energetic. If you've been to the cafeterias at the elementary school, we need to bring a little bit of life into them. So this is a project that we're gonna work on. And it's basically just different wraps and things like that. It'll give some color and, you know, make it a nicer place for all the students to dine.
Quick interruption on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you know that we're planning on some renovations at Carnegie Elementary? So we don't want to do any significant?
No, this is just signage, just, yeah, just different signage and things like that. Nothing that, you know, that's permanent, anything like that. Same thing up here. It's more, like I said, it's just branding and signage and things like that. Just trying to make it more modern at the high school as well. So this is the Rally Cafe, which is one of Aramark's programs. The Rally Cafe takes, you know, it'll be the Cougars Rally Cafe. We'll use the Cougar colors and things like that. So just different signage, branding and things of that nature. There's school spirit murals that'll be designed and things like that that we can just, you know, kind of lighten it up a little bit. It gives it a more modern feel and it's a minimal investment, you know, just different signage and things of that nature. So this is what we're working on and look forward to making it moving forward. And that's my presentation.
Right. How many years ago did you come on with us?
This, I've been here for two years now.
You've done a great job. Thanks. But the prior manager got us on a bad boy list for accounting. Are we off of that list yet, Keith or John, I believe?
Yes, we've been off.
We're off. Thanks. Okay.
And I'll echo Director Honchar's comments. You've done a great job.
Yeah.
The participation numbers appear to be up and I'll give you credit for that, you and the team. The menu, we've heard, is very good and so thank you for all of your efforts.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it is a team approach from the food service department. Everybody has hands on it. I think a lot, they take pride in their work. A lot of the inspections that come through, very high marks across the board for all levels of inspection. And I think also just to note the growth in the food service program despite the restrictions. I think if Mr. Raisikot shared the restrictions that he has when he develops a menu just based on sodium, calories, all the things that he has to make sure he designs a weekly menu on is extremely challenging. And to have that growth and to have the quality of the food, the kids engaged. And the other piece is you listen to the kids, which I think is outstanding. And you value their input, which helps you design the menu towards what they want, which is exactly what we're looking for in a food service director. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, next presentation, we have our budget presentation. At last month's meeting, we talked about the proposed final budget. Mr. Bealby will talk about our final budget that we have on the board agenda for this evening. I know the board has taken much time and deliberation over the past, not just at last month's meeting, but really a hard look since November and December as we entered into the budget season. And so Mr. Bealby will capture everything that we've talked about and the results.
Thanks for having me. Can't believe another year has gone by and we're actually looking at the 24-25 budget. In 25 years since 2000, we're still here, right? So tonight, basically like I do with every one of our finance committee meetings or any board meetings, feel free to stop me, question, you know, just keep in interactive. What I'm going to give you tonight is basically the highlights of the 24-25 general fund budget that you're gonna be voting on tonight. Over the past three months, we have engaged in detailed discussions regarding the needs of our student population, the potential capital projects, improvements of our schools, and the rising costs for supplies, services, and our capital projects as a result of the current inflation. But one, another important thing that we have to look at when we produce this budget was this is our first step of transitioning away from the ESSR money that we have received over the past several years. And this transition has had its challenges. First, we have to now adapt to a reduction in federal money. So any items that we have used or purchased or support that we have funded with this money has now have to find a new home. How are we going to pay for that project? We need to, we needed to evaluate the necessity of these expenditures to ensure that we were prioritizing the spending on these programs and initiatives that were most critical for the success of the students. We didn't want to just take a program and say, okay, we started with the federal programs. And if it's something that, you know, wasn't moving forward valuable for, you know, our students' success, there's no necessary to put non-federal money or taxpayer money back into that program. So we cautiously look at that information. So despite all these challenges and everything that we have discussed, I am confident that this budget is both responsible and forward-thinking. It reflects our commitment to maintain high-quality education while being mindful of our financial realities. So now let's review. So when we look at this budget, we look at where are we at coming into this year? This year, we are projecting modest growth in our revenues and a slight overage in our expenditures. And that's to be normal. The revenues that we are, the increased revenues are basically from our earned income collections are continuing to grow year to year to year, which is great. It's keeping, showing that our community is working. Secondly, we've taken advantage this year of our investments, our interest of our money. We did some bond issues, our CD issues, and we've made some very, very large gains in interest income this year. And that hopefully will continue in the next year or so. And also, we have also increased our rentals of our buildings and our athletic fields, which is something that has really been a testament to Rachel, who's been handling the buildings and for Nate with getting the athletics through. As far as the overage in expenditures, it's still really hard to judge where are we going to end up. You know, I'm estimating that we're gonna come in possibly with an increase of $306,000 to the fund balance. But we still have up to two months of revenues coming in. We still have that state budget problem where there's issues with, are we going to get all of our funding for this year? Let alone working about next year's budget. And also, we had some increased costs in our ESL programs, our nursing services. We've had to do a lot more of our outsourcing with that. So it's gonna be something that, that number, I wouldn't take it and hold it in a grain of salt. Like it could go up or down. But I just wanted to basically say that, you know, revenues are coming in good. Expenditures are trending to hit, if not go, just a little bit over, which is what the trend is over the last few years. So basically for starting this year, this coming year, our final budget summary, our revenues are gonna be $35,983,734. Expenditures, we are able to cover all of our expenditures with the revenues that we have. There will be no utilization of the fund balance that we have. So we will be able to keep all of the expenditures covered with the revenues that we have. The difference from the 23 estimated actuals is 3.55%. And the difference from the budget expenditures is 5.63. And one of the big reasons why there's a difference from the budgeted expenditures from last year is a lot of those ESSR items that we have discussed that have come back into the system and we'll go through them shortly. And also, you know, looking at the needs of the district, of what we need to do to assist the student population in the upcoming year or so. We'll go through that. So as far as meeting the needs of the district, what these are, these are new positions that were identified as necessary to help with the specialty, or not the specialty, but basic needs of our student population for the upcoming year. So we are putting into this budget, adding a specialized teacher, a speech therapist, three paraprofessionals. And also through a collaboration with the AIU, we're going to be adding 1.5 ESL teachers to assist with that population there. These are all new positions. These are positions that we have felt as a district, and we've all discussed in the past that these are necessary, that we need to fill. So those are in this budget. And we will also, not just in the last three months, but probably for the last year, we've been looking at the state of all of our buildings and looking at possible improvements that need to be done. And, you know, we have discussed in there, so in the planned phase of a major upgrade of the Carnegie Elementary School. So that part is, these are new things that have been added to the budget this year. Any questions on those? For the last couple of years, you've heard me talking about the ESSR cliff. And basically, for those that don't know what the ESSR cliff is, it's basically what I said in the beginning was, we have items that are either new programs or staff that we have brought on based on having the ESSR subsidy money that we've received. Or these are objects that are, that we have supplanted the money. So we've used, for instance, like the technology and educational software. These are all reoccurring costs that we have looked at and said, okay, the chill rooms and the mental health services. When we look at that, we have added three chill rooms, one in each building since the ESSR has been implemented. So we felt at that time that this is something that is important to keep into the budget. So at that point, we need to take it from the federal money to find some other source of funding for that. What we have been able to do for the chill rooms is find a grant that will allow us for the next year to pay for two and a half of those chill rooms. And also for our school psychologists, we also got another grant for that position for the next two years, I believe it is, or year?
One more.
One more year to pay for that position. So not only are we realizing that we don't have the federal money anymore to pay for these, but we're proactively looking for other avenues to keep the costs outside of the local taxpayer basis. So, so right now, the chill rooms and the school psychologists, we do have grants. Of course, they're never guaranteed, but we're always gonna be out there looking for them. And one other good thing that the ESSR has done for us has allowed us to take our technology, educational software, and our curriculum and to update it all, to get ourselves to the most current, to be able to give us time to then now, in the next two, three, four years, get on a cycle and get ourselves into a rotation that we never really had in the past. I mean, we knew when things had to be replaced, but a lot of times money wasn't available or there just wasn't planning enough to prioritize that. So it has helped us to get into that position that we are in. It's actually a pretty good position. And we do have newer equipment for our teachers, for our staff, and for our children. So any questions on that? You've seen the next couple of slides and, you know, I will show this to you, you know, every year just to kind of drive home what we are dealing with every year. If you're looking from the yellow line up, that is the amount of money that is coming from local sources. So that is no state money, no federal money. This is strictly coming from our taxes, our delinquent taxes, our investments. And basically, anything that we receive money from within our confines of our district is in that group. As you can see, the blue, that's the state. And then at the very, very bottom is the federal. So 65% of our revenue that comes to this district to pay for the programs and everything that we do has to come from local sources. And most importantly, if you look, $21,375,545 is from local taxes. That's a huge amount. That is something that we have to take into consideration every single time that we look at putting on new positions, putting on new programs. Because we need to keep that number as low as possible so that we don't have to keep driving more requests to the public to say, hey, we need this, to pay for this. And that gets back to that whole point about the grants. We need to continue, and we are always, every single administration, every single, the teachers are awesome. They really, really are. The amount of emails that I get throughout the year saying, hey, I found this grant, I got this grant, I got this grant. It's almost a nightmare for us to keep track of it, but it's so awesome to do that because then we are able to move some of that money from the taxpayer to those grants. So with, that's with the local, the state sources. So, with that's with the local, the state sources, right now, we talked about this many, many times, we have no idea when the state budget's gonna get passed. It's a mess. We have no true idea, more than any other year in the past, we really don't know how much we're going to get from the state. So, it's one of those issues, do you budget too much and then take a chance that, you know, roll that dice that you're, you know, you're gonna get that money that the government's gonna pass everything that they said they're gonna give you? Do you go with what we had last year, which is what you do get, but then you get a windfall there? So, it's that fine line where you have to sit and just basically pick a number and just hope that we come in close with it. It's not a true science, it's a terrible science, we hate doing it, especially being, you know, in business management, you don't wanna have those unknowns, but that's the name of the game.
Keith, to quickly highlight that, so, the state hasn't passed their budget yet, they may or may not pass it in the next couple of months, we're not sure when. Are we required to pass our budgets by a certain time?
We absolutely have to pass it by June thirtieth, there's no question.
So we'll have to roll the dice and take an educated guess, which you've been doing for months?
Right.
And pass something, and then we'll count on the local tax base to kind of carry us over until we can get state money, whatever shows up.
Right, and that's exactly right, and that gets back to that whole point is that, you know, if it does come in more than what we expected, then it's an absolute bonus for the district, and it's great for the district, but, you know, I would rather be low than high, you know, and I mean, that's really the most important thing is that I don't estimate that we're gonna receive more than what we really will receive, because honestly, we don't know, because the numbers have been the highest that they've ever proposed in years. And, you know, that's just one of those things that, you know, it's hard for us to do. And the federal grants, the only difference that, as you can see on the federal grants, is that there's no ESTR money anymore, so.
Keith, I have a question about the federal grants, 'cause I feel like, like I know as I became more involved in the school board and paying closer attention, like, I was shocked to find out about, you know, how many mandates there are on the district, so we have to do them. And in particular, I think the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act was, you know, they, it's mandated that they promise a certain level of funding, have never met that promise. But I feel like I recall reading recently that they might expect to, or expecting more increase in federal funding, have you heard of that?
I have heard talks.
But we're not?
But nothing, actually, this upcoming year, our title, which is the Title I, Title II, and Title IV federal funds have been decreased. So normally, it has been towards the same every year, year to year to year to year, but this is the first year that it has actually decreased to come, you know, for the start. So, you're right, they're not covering what was originally planned, but as, with everything, I believe that, and this is just my statement and from what I've heard, is that the government felt that with the ESTR money that they did, that that was a lot of their catch-up, that they were able to give us that ESTR money to kind of help us replace some of the money that we needed in the past. So, that's their logic behind that, so. But yeah, there's a lot of mandates for the title money, the federal program money, you know, we have, there's guidelines that we have to follow, and, you know, even with the food service program, you know, if we don't follow the guidelines of the menu, then we could lose our federal funding. Same thing with the title, if we, you know, don't use it for, you know, proper Title I expenditures, we lose that funding. So, everything is very, very tied to the different programs. It's something that, actually, some districts have that luxury, that they don't even take some of the federal grants, 'cause they don't wanna go through the, you know, the mandates that they have to go through, so. So that's the revenues that we have. So basically, like, you know, to recap, sixty-five percent local, thirty-two percent state, and three percent federal, that's where we get our money from. With this slide, basically what I wanted to show you is, what I did is, I took the expenditures and I did a whole big, high-level look at where's the money going. So if you look at the big blue supply, that's direct instruction. That's instruction that is going strictly, straight to the kids. That is, anything that is happening in the classrooms, the supplies that we're purchasing for them, anything that is in that area is being given right to the kids or spent right on the kids. So, sixty-two percent of our budget, or percent of our expenditures are going to the kids. And then you have your support services, which is everyone that supports the kids. So this is still internal, still get funded, so you have thirty percent of the money there. So, what this tells us is that ninety-two-point-eight percent of our money that we're budgeting as expenditures is going directly to the kids. As you see, the debt is four-point-eight percent non-instruction. The non-instruction is our athletics programs, our family engagement programs, different programs that do not relate directly to the instruction of the kids. So, that's always a good slide to see, you know, and to say, are we taking the money and then putting it where it needs to be? The next slide breaks it down into more detail, where we actually look at where is the money going in those big buckets? So, as with every, every district, wages and benefits are the biggest slices of pie. And then, you know, then you start looking at your professional services, but what, basically, that's what we wanted to look at, is that we wanna have that part of the pie, you know, so that those are direct costs that are going to the kids. And then, so, some of the costs, basically, what we're looking at is the contractual wages, six-hundred thousand, increased, medical insurance is constantly going up. Last year was at fourteen percent, they were able to lower it to ten percent this year, so that's a, it's a savings, even though it is a, still an increase to our budget. Piers rate decreased from thirty-four to thirty-three-point-nine-nine. Yeah, that's all we can say about that, because over the next five years, it's going back up again. They just gave us a little reprieve, so. It's just short-lived, it really does not save the district very much at all, but it does give us a little hope that maybe we are finally at that peak where they're gonna start leveling off. Debt transfers are only five-hundred-thousand dollars. Tuition, so basically, when tuition, eight percent or two-point-eight of our cost for tuition, so this tuition includes our charter schools, our outplace students, anyone that we, we take one of our students and put them in a program somewhere, that's where the tuition costs come. So, what I did is, I broke it down to the charter schools, which has been steady and now probably for the last couple of years, so around seventy students, give or take, you know, five or ten kids, either way. But the issue that we still have with that is, while the numbers are steady and the costs are still going up because of the way that they fund the charter schools, it's all based on our budgets. And, you know, as all of our budgets grow and get more expensive, then their portion gets higher. It's a non, non-logical way of coming up with these costs, and we've talked about this in meetings over and over again, but the only good thing that I can say on that is there is been some movement on the cyber portion of the tuition, where it has been starting to get some ground in the senate, in the congress over in the state, where they will set a rate for us that says, you know, if you have a child that is in the cyber school, this is the max that a cyber school can charge us. So, that's gonna be something that's positive, something we need to look at, but the whole charter school, as we say, year to year, year to year, you hear it every year from us, probably you heard it before me, is that's something.
If that legislation were to pass, how much do you think that would save our district?
We have, I would probably say of the seventy students, probably thirty of them are in cyber schools, so if they, if they're looking at eight-thousand dollars right now is the cost, that would be, right now, we are budgeting fourteen thousand, so it would be a little bit of a savings for us, so. It'd be definitely a welcome savings.
So, just on math, or quick on the charter schools, one-point-five-nine, about seventy students, so that's twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars a student to send to charter school?
Give or take, if that's, if they're regular, yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's just overall.
But overall, yes, you're about, that's correct, that's about the average.
So, I don't wanna put you in a spot, but do you think we could get it done for twenty-two thousand dollars a kid a year, right?
Yeah, and you're right, and that's something that we have to.
How much, I can't, how much do we spend on average?
Per pupil?
Yeah.
That's, you know, something that we've talked about, that we really have needs to go through, 'cause there's so many different variables that you have to look at to say, you know, what is the direct cost, or what are the costs that matches? So if we wanted to match ourselves up to a charter school, you know, what exactly are they using to come up with their costs, which, as we all know, they're not very open about their books. They're, you know, we don't know exactly, but, but you're right, we can go through and basically take, we have it broken down by school, how much each school is costing us, divided by the amount of school, kids in that school, and that will give us a per pupil, per school. But it's hard because of the different services that we offer and the different programs that we have, but, you know, you're right, I mean, it's something that we would have to really, really research and to see if we are saving.
I mean, honestly, just quick calculation of what it costs us to educate a student in Carlington's own cyber charter, as opposed to, you know, that twenty-one thousand dollars anywhere else? Yeah?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah, I'm trying to think, it's, our own's right around seven?
Seven thousand.
Five, five, six, seven thousand.
Four, six, yeah.
Right, it goes up as we have more kids, but you're right, but that's it, it's not like the cost of sending them out to cyber school. So it's absolutely economical and ideal for us to do what we can to get as many of those children back into either our school itself or even into our cyber program. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Keith, did you say how many kids are in the Carlington cyber school?
I believe the last time we saw was fifty-four?
No, I think we're somewhere around twenty-five, twenty-five to thirty?
Twenty-five to thirty.
Yeah, you might, right. I think, I think that is right around there.
So that's.
I know there was an influx last year, or two years ago, but.
That's a considerable savings to us.
Oh, definitely.
Even if it's twenty-five, thirty.
The benefit that students take over to the Carlington Cyber Charter Academy, they get a Carlington degree, huh?
Correct, and they can, they can attend the Carlington activities, they can do.
And Dave's Cyber Charter School.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. That is absolutely right. Any other questions on expenditures? All right, for as far as the tax assessment and millage, so, this budget, it does include an increase in the millage. The millage increase is one-point-seven-six-five percent. The revenue that will be generated from that is one-point-two-one million. The new rate will be twenty-eight-point-five-oh-eight-two mils. And basically, one mil, so for every mil that we raise, it will increase our revenues by seven-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. And the next thing I've put on there is the Taxpayer Relief Act, which is also the Homestead Act. So basically, what the Homestead Act is, is that any taxpayer that applies for this, just a one-time application that they need to do, then what the state has done with this Taxpayer Relief Act is they've reallocated gaming money that has been put into a pot, and then they give an allocation to the district to spread out amongst the, those that did the Homestead Act, and that is a reduction of their taxes for that year. This year, the state, for the first time, did raise that amount of money. It's been pretty consistently at seven-hundred-and-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-one for the last, you know, since its conception, but this year, our allocation was eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand and seventy-seven dollars, so basically, they gave us more money to allocate over. We had three-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-one of our residents that applied and were approved the Homestead, so basically, what's gonna happen is for everyone that is on that list of Homesteads, they're going to receive a tax credit off of their bill of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Last year was two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and seventeen cents, so that helps a little bit, you know, that the government is giving us a little bit more money to be able to offset the tax. And then on the rate, what I did is, I put an impact of this increased millage, so that you will see exactly what the impact of raising taxes of this amount. For the median household, one-hundred-and-seven-thousand, two-hundred, the increase for the year would be one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents, and the per month would be fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. So that's before any of the Homestead taxes are applied to it, and I gave a range, so that, this presentation will be on the website, so anybody that, you know, wants to take a look at what we have on here, I know it's a little hard to see on this, and especially the camera, you'll be able to see, you know, what exactly this is. As far as with the tax assessment, the millage increase, as you've known for, you know, the four years that I've been here, I take this, you know, very, very, you know, deeply. I don't like to raise taxes, and I will not raise taxes unless we have an absolute reason and we need to do it. My goal, my job, is to keep us viable, not just this year, next year, but, you know, five, six, seven years down the road. And I don't want it to be in five years that we are still viable, but we don't have the money to be able to keep the programs that we have or add the programs that we want to add. You know, that's the worst thing, is that you get to the end of five years, if you don't look at what you have, you know, what your revenues and expenditures are over that five-year period, that when you come to, you know, the superintendent and the board and say, hey, you know, if things were nice for the last four years, but we just didn't raise taxes enough, we're gonna have to cut positions, we're gonna have to cut programs. I don't wanna be in that discussion, you don't wanna be in that discussion, the public doesn't want that discussion, the professional staff doesn't want that. So, that's why, when we look at this, and everything that we have done over the last three months, looking at all, evaluating everything, it's not just looking at next year. ESTR's did put us in a good financial position for right now, but five years moving down with what we feel is necessary, the, you know, the change of the ESL population, the change of the needs of the students, the state of our buildings, it's getting to that point where we have to start looking at that. We have that ability to do that now, we didn't have that in the past, because we didn't have a fund balance to be able to absorb. So, that's really what I wanted to say about, you know, the tax increase. Any questions? And basically, you know, this, we have been able to keep the millage flat for the last two years, so, you know, it is unfortunate that, you know, we had to move this forward, but we have to just keep ourselves viable, that's the key. The last thing that I really wanted to go over was just basically our capital reserve fund, that's another fund that, what we have is, every year, the board will allocate money over to the capital projects fund, or capital reserve fund. We do have three-hundred-and-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars of our budget currently that will be transferred over to the capital reserve fund. This fund will be used strictly for capital projects, for just normal upkeep, you know, doing the sidewalks, the driveways, the normal upgrades that we need to do, smaller upgrades for the buildings. So, what we have right now, so we're at the beginning of this year, we'll have six-hundred-and-seven, or at the end of this current school year, beginning of next year, we'll have six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, two-hundred dollars in there. We're gonna transfer the three-hundred-and- We're going to transfer the three hundred five thousand, five fifty, once the budget is approved. So we'll have nine hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of funds available, estimated interest earnings approximately seventy-five thousand. So then, we're going to draw down approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if that number is exact, we're, we're still trying to, what we're basically doing is we're building a production studio and Mag Lab upstairs here in the junior, senior high school. And the majority of that cost will be absorbed in this capital reserve from money that we have placed in there from years past and current years. So we're, we're estimating that at the end of this year, we'll have three hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in the capital reserve fund. And this is something that, every year, not only do we look at our five-year plan for expenditures and for the district itself, but we also look at a five-year capital projects plan, just so that we can stay ahead of our maintenance, instead of, you know, reacting, we're, we're actually, you know, being proactive to, to get things done. So that's basically everything I have, is, I know it's quick, it was, but we exhaustively gone through this in the last, you know, three months, but I'm open for questions from the board? Concerns, statements, comments?
Questions? Keith, just so I wrap my head around it, so this is stuff that you talked about the last month and the previous month, as we went through the budget discussions, but your, your assertion of the need for the increases, that just general inflation has gone up, and everything we do and everything we buy is, is more expensive. Several teaching, several staff positions that we've added to help address needs of our, our student population, we've added that. And then a significant renovation at Carnegie Elementary.
Right.
It's going to be started potentially next year, and we need to have funds to allocate to that.
That, that's absolutely correct, and, and one thing that this tax increase will allow us to do is, it will allow us to, to have the revenue that we can allocate our portion of our fund balance, that there's different levels that you can put your fund balance. What we will do is we will dedicate that money strictly to future construction. So basically, if we do decide, as a board, or you as a board, decide to, to go out for a bond, we have the money built in now that will cover that bond for the next five, six, seven years moving forward. So that's, that's something that, we, we're proactively looking at what needs to be done to lessen having the need to, to just raise taxes every year, just to try to, to meet ends. So we're being a little more proactive right now, but the majority of it is because of the inflation, the ESRS, you know, keeping the children, it's an expensive, but necessary expenditure for us. So you're right, that, that's a portion of it, of the bond, but exactly what you said is, is what has been covered and what has been looked at over the next five years to keep us viable.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments?
Well, I, I think that, Keith, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Come on in.
Go ahead. I have a question, there's, my understanding is that with this millage increase, there would be probably no increase in twenty-five and in twenty-six, right?
I, I will never promise that, but probably, yes.
Probably, okay.
Probably, yes.
If we were to have spread this, if we were to spread this out, out over three years, instead of just a big millage increase now, how much would that cost the district additionally to spread it out?
Basically, what you would have to look at is, you would have to look at whatever rate that we decided this year. So let's say if we did a reduced rate, how much would that cost? So then you look at, what is that lost revenue that you have? So let's say it's two hundred thousand dollars. So let's say if we, if we go to the index, and we decide, let's say, go half of that index, we're going to lose two hundred thousand dollars of potential tax revenue. That two hundred thousand dollars compounds year to year to year to year. So when you don't take that two hundred thousand dollars, so now you're already starting two hundred thousand low, so then you go to the next year, you're, you're still two hundred thousand, but if you compound it, you're really four hundred thousand low. So that's where you, it's better to, to raise one-time, big raise, because if you did spread it out, when you run the numbers, you're going to end up raising the taxes, the millage, higher than what is necessary at the point. And then that's the whole point, is that we want to look at is, you know, maximizing the tax increases and not just, you know, raising it just to raise to cover this year, and then all of a sudden, we have to raise again to cover next year, plus whatever we had the previous year. And then, so you end up having to raise more towards the end.
Thanks, thanks for the explanation.
It, it's hard, and, and we can go over it again, I mean, we, we talked about during our, when we went over the capital project plan, when we looked at and said, I said, okay, well, we might need a nine percent over the next five years, and then if we did it this way, we might need thirteen percent to get the same effect, because of how you, you raise the taxes, to get that compounding.
If by chance Harrisburg gets their act together, and they give us more than we expected, where does that money go?
That money will just go back into our fund balance, and then that, that number then does, we, when we start every year, and we start our, looking at the expenditures and looking at our five-year plan, we're going to be increased by that amount. So then that's less money that we have to worry about.
And so we will be making interest on that?
Absolutely, absolutely, right. And then that's, that's also the biggest part, too, is that we're going to do our part to get grants, we're going to do our part to, to get the CDs, to maximize the money that we have. And, and that's where, even if we, we decide to go out for a bond, you know, we can always go out for a bond a little bit early, put that money into a CD, get the interest on it, you know, based on following the arbitrage laws. But there's, there's, there's ways for us to, to take the money that we have, maximize it, which then will help us in the long run, that we won't need to have to raise taxes, absolutely.
Thanks, Keith.
Joe?
Oh, I was just going to comment that, you know, it's, it's looking back over the last several years and with the ESRS funding that we had, I feel like folks have gotten us to a very effective way of spending that money, looking at what was done, well, what comes to mind most, because I drive by it every day at Crafton Elementary School. You know, that building is what, a hundred and some years old now? This building is fifty?
Thirty.
Thirty, thank you.
And, you know, Carnegie Elementary is even older, so, you know, we, we, we do take good care of our buildings, but as with any older building, you know, whenever you're retrofitting technology, just trying to adjust to the changing needs of, you know, the population. I think that, you know, we end up having to invest in these buildings, and, you know, I really am proud of the way we've had these discussions, although we've not made a final decision on, on just exactly what we're going to do with Carnegie Elementary. I think it's been pretty obvious that we have to do something to, to improve the situation down there. And so I, I thank you for your efforts, and John, Dr. Kreider both, because we, we do need to prepare for this, not just react to it, and understand that while we've got a bond payment, now, now we want to raise taxes to cover that bond payment, and we're looking forward to what we're going to have to have on hand to make those payments, so, thanks very much.
Anybody else?
Ask a question?
I'm sorry, yes, you appreciate your patience.
Your stat on household, median household?
Yes.
Is that a median house value or a median household income?
It's a median household assessment value.
Assessment, in, in our area?
In our area, that, that strictly comes from the median household assessment office.
All right, Keith, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Dr. Kreider, any other superintendent report items?
That's all we have for this evening.
All right. Before we move on to committee reports, Dr. Apple, do you have anything to share on Parkway West?
I do, just briefly, we, we met on the fourth this month. That summer camp coming in, at that point in time, there were six hundred and twenty-four applications for the two-day camp, that's fifth to eighth graders, and they expect a lot more by the time camp starts. And also, looking at enrollment figures for next year, total enrollment estimated for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, at this point, is thirteen hundred and eight students, which is sixty-two more than last year at this time, and that's almost certainly going to increase. So that's the big news. The other news is that we are not going to have any meetings until July, August, so, you know, have to listen to those two months.
Joe, you've always been an advocate for Parkway, and they continue to kill it. Like, I know the macro conditions are favorable, where there's a lot of jobs and a lot of need, but the team out there has done an awesome job, and you continue to advocate for them, and they're doing great.
Well, thanks, and, you know, I mean, I think that, I look at how they've always operated, which is this five years looking forward, and it's a rolling thing, and I'm really glad that, you know, we've been able to, to start to do that over the last several years, because I think it's a, a really intelligent way to manage and, and kind of avoid having big shocks that way.
Dr. Hanscher, any updates on Pathfinder?
Sure, last month, I did not give a full report, because we had a very long meeting. The Pathfinder report for May essentially is, we've had a lot of kindergarten requests, so we may need two classrooms this coming year. It's going to, depending on the kids' needs, that we have six, seven, or eight pupils in the kindergarten. The enrollment is eighty-nine now, but if we do get that extra kindergarten, it's going to be in the mid-nineties. Let's see, the, our principal, Nick Fratto, is going to be moving on. He's going to be a special projects coordinator for Pathfinder, Mon Valley, and Sunset. So we'll see him once and all. Nick Fratto's father, also Nick Fratto, was our first superintendent at Carleton.
Yeah.
And then he was, he was here from sixty-nine to eighty-six. I'm going to be passing something here, I should have more copies, if you have. And this, this young man here in the middle, he's from Carleton. He's going to be graduating next year. I don't know if anybody, any of you know him, but his, his name is Mukadar Dalazai. His nickname is Muk. This is an amazing young man. He came into the United States, into our school district, walk on his right foot, walking on his outside shin. Through operations, he's now walking flat-footed, but he is using a walker. But this guy, as you can see from his picture, he, every time I've seen him, he's always, always has a smile on his face. He's like the potion shower for my mental health, Muk. And that's it, thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chris. Director Zaleski's not here tonight, so Dr. Kreider, any update? All right. Legislative PSBA director, if you could, if you could, anything to share?
I have two short things. PSBA is in their budget impact campaign right now, because it's June and it's budget month. So we're in week three, and the ask is to just ask your legislator to support cyber charter school funding reform, which Keith talked about. So that kind of leads into my legislative update, which Keith mentioned again. They are in Harrisburg, they are still trying to figure out the budget, but on June tenth, which was last Monday, I think, House Bill twenty-three seventy passed. We touched on it a little bit, but it's basically, to summarize it, it was a ninety-page bill, but it would boost public school funding by billions, and it would impose stricter rules on cyber charter schools. But, so it passed the House, it's in the Senate Education Committee right now. Not looking like it's probably going to pass there, it'll go back, it'll probably amend it, it'll go back to the House, go back to the Senate. But five Republicans did vote in the House for this, so maybe, they're having talks, but I know that the Senate just dropped their session schedule for, like, September and October, and they're basically saying that they are in session almost every day in October. So what that means is they're saying, like, if you don't get this done now, I'm going to force you to come back to Harrisburg, when you're supposed to be campaigning and getting your petitions done. So get it done now, or you're going to have to suffer. So it, it'll go into July, most definitely, they're in session next week, Monday to Sunday, actually, both chambers, House and Senate. They're probably not going to get anything, they won't get it done by Sunday, but most likely, we're looking at second, first and second week in July. But we'll see.
That's awesome.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Dr. Simsek, any updates on the foundation?
Well, the last meeting we had, there were kind of two major topics of conversation that, that would maybe affect the board here. First of all, you know, the foundation has grant, grants for teachers, they can fill out and request. But we found that, that there's some confusing information, maybe sometimes the teachers aren't completely aware of, you know, the, the method used to determine if we're going to fund a grant or not. We want to be consistent, we want to be clear. We know that there's some PTA money that can, can go to teachers as well, or to different, different things that they're planning. So the foundation wants to engage with the PTAs and make sure that we're all on the same page, and that, you know, we're consistent in, in how we're awarding the grant money, and, and it aligns with what the PTAs are doing as well. So we haven't had that meeting yet, but we plan to shortly. The other thing that came up, it was, you know, they were talking about the needs of our English language learners, and in particular, students who maybe can't speak English at all, who are, you know, coming here at the high school level. And, you know, it's maybe easier to pick up when you're in elementary school to start to learn the English language skills. But say you're, you know, a seventeen-year-old kid, and you haven't spoken English, you can't read or write, maybe even your own language. So it's a big, big struggle for, for our teachers. So the foundation stated that they would be willing to pay, refund translating headsets for a trial, to see how that might work in some of our classrooms. And they spoke with Dr. Kreider about it in our education committee meeting, and he, he agreed that he is willing to, you know, try that out and see how that works. So we have a couple of teachers who, who said they would be, you know, willing to do a test for us, and then we do want to proceed with, you know, trying, it, it's just, they just said, there's just too much time trying to spend communicating with one student, and yet every other student suffers. So I'm really excited that we're willing to give this a try and see how that works. Another aspect of that that came up was the possibility of using such headsets for standardized testing. And Dr. Kreider stated he wasn't sure what the state would require in that regard, so we do want to investigate that. There were also thoughts on doing a cost-benefit analysis between using the AIU for English language learner programs, or trying to bring, have more in-house staff for that. So we, we do want to do a cost-benefit analysis and see, you know, what, what would be best for our students and for our, our community. So I think it's really good, being, really good things to talk about, and really happy and excited that the district is willing to explore those things. And, you know, as soon as you're ready to look into the headsets, let us know, and the, and the foundation, you know, let us know what's your part for that.
Chris, and one more thing, and I think I brought this up in the past, maybe not, Carrie could, could have more information. But there's some of the kids coming in from cultures where they're illiterate in their own languages, which makes it even harder for our teachers to teach them.
And that was one of the points that they were.
So would the headsets help these, those kids?
Well, you'd be speaking to them, they would hear it in their language, just kind of like the United Nations.
Even though they're illiterate, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be hearing it in their language.
That would be a step in the right direction.
If we, you know, we'll see how it works, so.
Thanks.
Chris, that's huge, the foundation has done a great job in so many ways, but that's another huge step, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions, board members, about any of the committee reports or any of the topics? Reese, have you, did you get?
Public comment?
Just on the, you had asked to talk about the budget, and you had asked a question, did you get your, all your questions answered?
No, no, I still have more, whatever's appropriate.
On the, on the budget, do you have specific questions?
On the tax increase.
Okay. Now would be the great time, because we'll have, we're going to jump into the rest of our meeting, and I figured, since we put you off at the beginning to let you hear the presentation, now would be a great time to do it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I asked if you wanted me to go up here, usually.
That, that was great.
So I actually, I don't have that much to say about this. I actually had thought you guys had voted on this last, last meeting, but I would be regretful if I hadn't come up and spoken in opposition to the tax rate. Already, I believe, our real estate taxes are disproportionately high to other districts. This puts a big burden on a lot of the families here. A lot of the families, yeah, it's a big part of their budget, especially in the past three years, we had inflation either way at people's earnings power. And while, you know, there are some stats that are like, oh, well, you know, overall, you know, wages in this have kept up, but it's wages in different places for different people for different jobs, that's not wages across the board for everyone. And so maybe on net as an economy, you know, wages have kept pace with inflation somewhat. That's not the case for everyone. There are still a lot of people, especially in our communities, that have had their purchasing power be eroded away through the inflation we've faced in the past three years. And not only that, the fight with inflation is still not over. There's still going, there's still inflation going on, and so people's purchasing power is going to continue to be eroded away even more. And so I really don't think it's a great idea to be increasing this burden on a lot of our families as well. I noticed with sort of the median household, a lot of that, the reason it's so low is because, you know, it's been locked in place from the evaluations from the real estate assessors. We all know that's not actually the median price of a home in our district, though many people, I'm sure, wish it was. So we know that naturally, our real estate taxes are going, our real estate tax revenue is going to be increasing as those homes get reassessed, and more accurate valuations are placed on them, and that in and of itself is going to increase their, the property tax associated with that property anyway. I think overall, increasing the property taxes further is also going to disincentivize people from wanting to move into our community, which I think wouldn't be a, a good thing. I think we want to encourage people to move in, because it's, they get more vibrant. You know, right now, I know for a lot of the, for Carleton, there are a lot of older couples in homes all across the community. And so in the next coming decades, people are going to unfortunately be dying, and we want, as people die, more people to be moving into the communities and for this to be seen as a place that people want to move and want to come to. And I think adding on additional property taxes, especially one we're already so high, is going to do us a really big disservice in the long term. I also worry about, this presentation, a lot of it discussed about sort of, oh, we need to set ourselves up for the long-term future. I just worry if, if we are set up enough for the long term, even, you know, with this tax increase, because I think from the discussion around tax, the tax increases, it was, oh, we haven't, you know, look, we haven't increased for the past three years, which is really good, I'm glad you guys haven't, I really appreciate it of that, because I don't think we should be increasing them. But it's like, oh, it's a good thing that we didn't increase them, and that really should be the baseline. We should be in a financial situation where we don't have to increase taxes every so often. We should be able to suffice at a singular tax rate. And while, you know, we did say, oh, there's a good chance we won't have to increase the tax for the next three years, that's good, I'm very glad about that. But what about beyond that? What about indefinitely? I really don't think we should be in a position where the status quo is every four years, we have a millage increase. I think we need to get ourselves to a spot where we can, at the very least, maintain our tax rate, and hopefully in the future, even lower it. But at the very first start, stop the bleeding by stop raising it even further. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reese. One quick point, I don't know if you made this fair, but if, if there were to be a reassessment of home values, the district, I believe, by statute is forced to adjust our millage rate so that there's not an influx of cash. We wouldn't benefit from the change in valuation, so.
On a singular house?
No, on a singular house, we have to be neutral. Whatever goes up, the millage has to go down and make it.
So is there a different millage rates for all the houses?
No, 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 no. When, when a house changes hands, you go to sell your house, person comes in, they buy it, on the state, or in the Allegheny County, it's 105,000. When you go to sell it, yours is worth 200. That person gets reassessed, and then the district gets compensated back at that 200, the new assessment rate. So it's not, some of the discussion here was Allegheny County doing a full reassessment. The individual house does get reassessed when it's sold, and then the district does get the higher assessed value and the new tax rate for that individual house.
I'm not talking about the whole county reassessment, I'm talking about the individual houses.
So if we had a large volume, everybody abandons Crafton and Carnegie and Ross and Farms, and new people move in, yes, we, you'd see a surge in the revenue that the district would experience because everybody's house value.
And that's what I'm talking about, I'm not talking about county-wide reassessments.
But it doesn't, doesn't happen that way. You know, I mean, you get, people move in and out, but then it's always.
And that's what I'm talking about, the slow churn.
Yes.
Correct.
But that slow churn is factored into the median home value. The median home value that Keith referenced is from 2024.
2023. 2023. The point I was making is that we should expect that median home value to increase over time.
Correct.
Because, I mean, it's obviously lower than what is the true median home value of the homes, and so as individual homes get reassessed, not that big county-wide reassessment, but as individual homes are reassessed, that median home price is going to increase.
But just to be very clear, it's not obviously different than the median home value. It is the median home value. That is the accurate median home value for our district right now.
It's just a mathematical equation.
Your point is that your house might be higher than my house might be higher than.
I mean, that's the median assessment, but you're telling me, like, that's the median home value, if we were to, you know, put every single house on the market, what they all sell for, that's the median, I find that.
It's the median, what their current.
Yes, yes, I agree. I know, I, I agree with that. That's not what I'm, what I'm saying is that the actual market value of the homes is not the median, so we would expect that median to increase as more and more houses are reassessed.
Correct, but your millage is not applied to the market value of your home, it is applied to your assessment.
I, I know, and I'm saying the assessments are, are, this is never going to increase ever. Because that's what I'm saying, the assessments, they did reassess.
They'll go up at some point.
And that, that's all I'm saying.
Right, yep. Sounds good.
Can I have your name for the next?
Oh, Reese Snell, R E U C P.
Thank you. I just want to touch on that because when I first joined the board, I was very ignorant of the budget and how to basically fund a school district, and I was a sponge of just information, and I took it all in, and I sent on a finance committee, and I'm still learning. And Keith took a significant amount of time to sit down with me and explain everything. Carleton is a very small school district. This is not only a problem with us, this stems from the state. This stems from the federal government as well. The problem with every school, mostly, I don't want to speak on behalf of everybody, mostly every school district weighs heavily on property taxes, and you have increasing funds with, I mean, teachers, and you have contract, like, things, everything increases. So while everybody would love for it to be a flat rate and never go up, that's just not possible, and it would be a problem if the government was able to fund it better, and that's what they're in the talks of right now in Harrisburg. So I totally get it, that like, it stinks that they're going to go up, if they might, only vote on it, but in the end, we should probably be lobbying our state legislators to say, why is this happening? Why are, you know, why are we underfunded? Why are there 500-plus school districts in, in the state of Pennsylvania? Do they talk about merging? So I think in the long run, you talked about, are we going to be okay for, for the next 20 years? I don't think anybody knows that in any school district, but we are budgeting for the next five years to make sure that we're fiscally responsible and we are able to be a sustainable school district and put funding into our students to make sure that they are learning in a healthy environment and they're actually getting a free and fair education.
And that's, that's another point, too. I appreciate that it's important that we want to attract people to move into our district. But I think another thing that's going to attract people to move into our district is the quality of our schools and the education we can provide. And, you know, what, what we're hoping to do is invest back into our district so that we can meet the needs and make this a district that people want to bring their children to.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate the board comments, very eloquent. Everybody good with, if we move on to section four? Okay. We have four items under section four. I'll undertake a motion to approve all four items.
Some moved.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under section five, we have some more tactical items, and there's a few items that might be considered more strategic. Let's separate out maybe the first four items we can do as a group. So I'll undertake a motion to approve items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4.
5.4, you need to fill in.
5.4, yes, we'll fill that in. And Kelly Zaleski has been our treasure, and Kelly Zaleski, not just because she's not here, but Kelly has graciously agreed to continue to be our, our treasure. So we'd be, we'd be including Kelly Zaleski as our treasure. So can we have a motion for 5.1 through 5.4 with Kelly Zaleski as our treasurer?
Move.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I'm personally solicitor, do we want to do a voice, a one-to-one, or can we do it as a group?
You can do it as a group, or even, whatever the board chooses is perfectly fine.
I'm comfortable with a group vote. Can we bundle together 5.5 and 5.6, which is sort of the tax piece, and we'll do that together? So 5.5 is the general budget for next year, and then 5.6 is the millage rate that would accompany that. I'll undertake a motion to approve items 5.5 and 5.6. Thank you, Derek.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'll quickly just note that based on Keith's information, the inflation that we've seen, that all of us have seen, the staff increases that we need to make to support our students, and the programs we want to do, especially at Carnegie Elementary with the significant renovations, on top of having two years of frozen taxes, I'm very comfortable supporting this. But anyway, any other questions or comments?
In acknowledging that we've discussed the details of what this is going to look like at our last four meetings and two separate detailed committee meetings, so not that folks think this was our entire discussion of the budget, we've been slicing this 12 days to Sunday for three months now, so.
Well said. Correct. Any other comments or, or questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you.
Abstain.
Abstentions?
Yes.
Okay, you're abstaining on five, 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 six.
May I explain why?
Sure.
Okay. We need this tax increase, yes. But it's been, I was hoping that it would be done at a lower rate for the next three years, but it, as Keith so well explained, it's going to cost us more money. But there are so many, especially retirees, that have not even kept up with this terrible inflation of the past three years. Even with the homestead exemption, it's nothing. It's like bucket of spit, really. It's not going to help them at all. All of us have incomes that have increased every year. Those people, some of them, what I think of, well, I'm not going to get that specific, but it's very difficult. That's why I abstain, even though it's a necessity to have this increase, whether this year or over three years. Thanks, Keith. And that's not based on statutory conflict of interest, so you will not have to fill out the conflict of interest.
Thank you. George, I appreciate you sharing your.
Thanks.
Moving on to the second grouping, or third grouping of items under section five, we've got 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, 5.10, and 5.11. I'll undertake a motion to approve those items.
I so move.
Second.
Thank you, moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? If not, the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you. Under section six personnel, we have six items. I'll undertake a motion to approve all six items.
Some moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I think you should.
Motion carries, thank you.
And under the personnel agenda, we do have a resignation, our director of Special Education, People's Services, for which I'd like to thank her, serve her district over the past three, four years. Mrs. Hoffman came in during a very challenging time through COVID. She is moving on to, to another position, and we certainly wish her well.
Great point. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Any old business from any director they would like to share? Any new business from any director? Any open forum items from our public?
Just because of the new information about Sarah Hoffman, you know, I'm all about this move, from the special needs to, from Carnegie to Crafton. Sarah, we have already had one discussion, how will that be worked out through the summer? Is she staying on for a certain amount of time? Like, there's a lot of information that needs to be handed out.
Sure is, yeah. So we plan to hold her, as a district, we're capable of holding employees for 60 days, so we plan to hold for the 60 days, which takes us into the first week of August.
Okay.
So we plan to have her work through a lot of the details that we needed to in regard to the services at Crafton Elementary School in particular, because it is a high-level interest, that we want to make sure that that program is very successful, that we meet the needs and the communication and all that. So once we look at the transition plan, we'll continue with the efforts. Over the summer, we do have training available for some of our paraprofessionals, some of our teachers, networking with Patan and the AIU for professional services with training, particularly for autistic support in particular. So a lot of the efforts that we've put forth, and a lot of the planning issues put forth, it is coming to fruition over the summer, and we'll continue and keep the communication open for sure.
Okay, great. That, she wasn't sure if people could actually have the training over the summer, so with hearing that, I hope the paras would be, take advantage of that, if that will be offered during the summer.
With that transition, we would respectfully ask for your patience with it, but also, don't hesitate to raise your hand. Like, if you sense that, because you know of that transition happening, if you think there's a gap that has occurred, don't hesitate to raise your hand, say, hey, I know there's a transition, but can somebody help me with this particular situation? So.
Yeah, we, we had an in-depth discussion, where I still have my concerns, because as it stays right now, the classroom is just moving as its entirety over. There's no mixing, there's no, so I just kept asking to revisit that and get some other input from, I don't know if that's the AIU, Patan, I don't know, but just to make this improvement, please. Make this improvement.
We want this to be, as Dr. Kreider said, we want this to be wildly successful, so we'll look to you to help share any concerns as it happens, knowing that there's a transition occurring, so.
Yeah, and I know it's a transition, so I know there's timing involved. It's not going to be, you know, great on day one, but if we just keep moving in that great direction.
Absolutely. Thank you. And Rachel, do you have?
Dorsey.
Any other open forum questions or comments? If not, board members, any open forum questions or comments? I'll undertake a motion to adjourn the meeting. Move to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.